Mr. Chairman, have a call.
I'm calling the meeting over. I'm taking the call from Brooklyn.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Mr. Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Brown.
Present.
Alderman Creason, not present. Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Powers, not present. Commissioner Boaz.
Present.
Commissioner Harris.
Commissioner Schrauder, not present.
And Chair President Tanner.
Thank you. We've only got a couple of items on the agenda tonight. First, I'd like to ask about the minutes of the meeting. Anybody have a motion?
Second.
In respect to the three minutes, are there any questions that I can look at? Here is one. It's from Paul Brook.
Alderman Boyd.
Hi.
Commissioner Bradley.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Peoples.
Hi.
Commissioner Boaz.
Hi.
Commissioner Harris.
Hi.
Chair President Tanner passes with all present voting.
Don, do you have any comments?
I do. So, one, thank you for joining us on the question. We have only two action items tonight. All of them are represented by attorneys. That's what we mean for our general dynamic tonight. No architects, no engineers, no planners, no bottle washers, but two attorneys. The first item you're going to hear is going to be presented by Emily Joy Lucas, who has joined us as a new staff member in the plan. So, and so, I think this is the start of your third week.
It is.
Great. And we'll let her represent.
Okay. So, this is a development area for 3942 Slade in the Shaw neighborhood. Just over an acre size. Single apartment, although the largest apartment in the block is surrounding area. It's a former school building. It's a school built in 1898. And then it closed in 2014. It's a three-story building. It was purchased for $709,000 and will be a 4.5 million development project. The developers plan to renovate it into 48 market rate apartments and get the off-street parking spaces on the west side. And so, it's a development entity of advantage development. They recently began construction of the former Lafayette School Building on Anne Avenue and then also the former company for the state. This is the parcel. And here's the front of the building. It's got 20 street presence and great tree trees. There are a couple of views. The left-hand side is the gymnasium and what's coming from the playground at one time is the building. And then, from the other end of the building, you can see the parking lot, which is in great poor condition. And the building here, there's a few openings they do at the top there and on the back of the building, but it's still exposed. We did show the building in clear condition. Okay. Here's a rear view of the building. And you can see the gymnasium through and then that's standing in the parking lot or the playground on the side. Then the picture on the right is standing in the alley of neighbor across the driveway of the neighbor across the alley. These are the vacant properties. So, the top rows are the properties that you can see standing in front of the building. There's several, but it's basically, they're mostly single or two-family units. There's a couple of four-family units on that side. And then, the bottom row is the south side of the street. On the corner, it's a pretty nice of Slade. At left-hand picture, there's some institutional commercial uses. The St. Margaret's of Scotland Church uses that corner building for meetings. And then, it's a little great spot called Sweet Art and it's a cupcake place, coffee area. On the right-hand side, this blue dormer, that building is next to the parking lot. There's also a couple of multifamily properties at the end of the block at the intersection of Orange and Slade. At least 10 units on the right and east to east.
Mr. Chair.
There are plenty of details in the site plan and your packet with a couple of them. So, the building itself is determined by the city committee and it's an institutional preservation development area. However, because of the case of the rules, you have the discretion to determine it to be insubstantial to the plan if the ability of property is that it is, but supposedly should be a valid property. The entire surrounding area is a neighborhood preservation area. So, the residency actually is in conformity with the surrounding area. There's no evidence of any maintenance. It's a 10-year tax evasion. One thing to note is there's an area in zones of family that is held within a ten area. If it doesn't cover, it may be a judge of need. And you'll notice there's consistency with multifamily property on the lot. We do recommend that you approve that, and I'm glad you've done your thing.
And Dave Sweeney is here representing the developer?
Do we have, I guess, initially any questions for Emily? Sweeney, would you like to?
This is Alderman Conway's alma mater, so it's very important. He's been here since, uh, he just mentioned that meeting. It's been before neighborhood development, senior tax evasion. This is the third school, as mentioned before, advantage. It's taken some beautiful buildings, using them again, getting home, school, getting back to the service. It's a city company. We're located on Hampton. They're very city-protected. They continue to look to all parts of the city, to see what they want to do, like product. The parking, there's 50 parking spaces for 38 units, so we all off-street parking the neighborhoods, and we're built.
How long has it been taken?
Since 2013. So, long enough that there's a little damage, but nothing like what we were doing with the 815 Lafayette. That would significantly, a couple more years. But every year.
Any other discussion or question?
Dave, this came out of committee last week, right?
It did.
Okay. For disclosure, I'm chairman, of course, of neighborhood development. I do remember this coming up, and it was voted out of committee with a due-pass recommendation.
There's no? There are votes?
A vote? Second.
And moving to the section of the meeting that we're approving? Any discussion?
Uh, previous roll?
Any questions? We have previous roll in the session? Period then, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
I'm only in St. Louis when we have the reference of Alderman's school. I thought it was high school.
It wasn't high school, Lou.
For the record, Alderman Boyd, you went to elementary school, right?
No. Langston, Hempstead. Looking forward to Hempstead one day.
Yep. And further for the record, I was at his 50th birthday party where his mother talked about his academic direction. What's elder?
It was very economically informative.
So, members of the commission, this is our next action item. It's the one where it's a two-step process where we take on one last chance, one more step in the city processes of looking at a demolition permit request, which had gone through the process and being denied by the staff of the cultural resources office, gone through the preservation board, and they denied both of the demolitions that are part of this, due to the matters. We do that, we're empowered to do that. We do it rarely, meaning since our existence in 1999. We've seen a dozen or 15 or so taken up, not every one of those. We voted to take up this. It's to remind you that this is not sort of a new bite at the apple, per se, is that the packet you got in the mail of the testimony and the material, that's the record that's constituted at the preservation board. It's the record that you are to use to inform your judgment as to acting on this. We're pretty liberal in terms of our timeline for acting. We could continue it for tonight. We will, tonight, do the part that is certainly before us and could complete it, meaning that the canter us following our decision last month, September 7th, that we now take up this review, review of the record. We do allow all written arguments by the applicant and the preservation board staff, partly as a refresher and a guide to the material before you and to see some of that in person. We ask that both of those presenters do not enter in new information. We don't have a buzzer that goes off when they do, but we appreciate sticking to that standard. The applicant and the preservation board staff will each have 20 minutes. We will then allow a five-minute rebuttal, for lack of a better word. And then, your action is in your deliberation and now standing in, you've seen the decision points for the preservation board. And as you may be reminded, is in our degree of interlocking here, is the preservation board has a member on the planning commission by design, and that member is Dave Visentain. So, the action we can do, you can do, is affirm what was the decision of the preservation board, reverse it, or modify it in some way. So, that's what's going to be before you. I will suggest that we begin with Dan Krasnoff, the director of cultural resources office, to give the offices 20 minutes. No obligation, Dan, to use the whole 20 minutes, to refresh you on this topic. Before I do so, Dan's the new director, and I believe, Dan, you were present at this particular preservation board meeting?
Yes.
Like it was your first day?
My first day, yes.
So, he's taken that opportunity to study and blown up on it. I would like to ask, just as part of this, we do this in frequent, is of the members of the planning commission, I'll ask it them this way. Who was present during the previous preservation review? You get to be the middle of the round. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, are there any other questions? No. I just would like to emphasize that, again, we're based on the presentations and the information provided at the preservation board meeting and not additional new information. And I guess, to lead off, if the Alderman over is here and then light out, and if he has the ability to comment to, perhaps to stand with him.
I think my call is over in a minute.
So, with that, is, yes, we did get a transcript of the minutes from the record of the Alderman Boyd. Dan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dan Krasnoff. As Don said, I'm the director of cultural resources in the city of St. Louis. There's going to be two parts to my presentation tonight. The first will be a visual presentation of the material that the staff presented at the preservation board meeting. And the second half will be my written remarks about the preservation board's decision that night. So, further ado. So, the addresses in question are 5303 and 637 to 19 Clayton Avenue. Here we have a map that was presented to the preservation board. You can see two parcels which are crosshatched in green. The one on the right is the 5303 building. The one on the left is the 6317 to 19 building. This is a gram in Clayton Avenue, so the orient of the Clayton, in the Clayton-Tam neighborhood, otherwise known as Dogtown. The corner to the west of this is the corner of Clayton Avenue and Tam Avenue, kind of the commercial center of that neighborhood. So, this is a look at the, at the street. The, okay, oh, sorry about that. The building, the building at the far right-hand corner with the awning, the one-story building is 6303 Clayton Avenue. And then, the building on the left-hand side, it says Coffee House on it, is 6317 to 19 Clayton Avenue. This is the front facade of 6303 Clayton Avenue. It's a one-story commercial structure. This is a look at the side and the rear elevations, just regards the address at the bottom. Again, this is what was presented to the preservation board, and the addresses got mixed up here, but this is 6303, the one-story commercial building you're looking at. The picture on top, the beige section of the one-story building is the 6303 building that's proposed for demolition. The two-story building behind it is the corner building that it abuts. Then, the bottom picture is a detail of the commercial storefronts. The picture you see here is of the 6317 to 19 building. This building is actually, has some different parts to it. The building, the Coffee House, is a commercial storefront that was built on the front of a shotgun house. The parcel, the block, I should say, is bisected by an alley in the center of the block. So, this is a picture at the top of the west facade of the 631917 building. And then, the picture at the bottom is the rear elevation. So, the picture at the top is the east wall of the residence. So, that's the shotgun section of the house, sort of on the back of the, of the parcel facing east. And then, the next picture is a small addition on the rear of the eastern end of the addition of buildings of Coffee House. Next, we've got some context photographs. So, the picture on top is a picture of the north side of the street, looking west. The second building on the left that you see, or the second building from the right, rather, with the green awning, is the 6303 commercial building that's proposed for demolition. And then, down the street, you can see the one-story building that says Coffee House on it. The other building's proposed for demolition. The picture at the bottom is the same side of the building, looking the other direction in the direction of Hampton Avenue. The Coffee House building you see, probably kind of featured here, is 6317 to 19, proposed for demolition. And then, you can see the smaller commercial structure at 6303, further down the block. This is a context photograph, looking south, across the street from the buildings that were in question for demolition. Some noteworthy things about this lot, the lot across the street is owned by the owner of the building proposing demolition for 6303 and 6317 to 19. He also is the developer of the large building in the background of the picture that was a residential structure. And the buildings that you're looking at, with their rear elevations, here, are commercial storefronts that stay on to Tam Avenue. So, that includes the photographs and the context pictures that were shown to the preservation board. I will continue my testimony based on my oral remarks. So, the preservation board considers the appeal of the denial of the demolition permit for these two buildings after the cultural resources office staff denied demolition permits in letter of date May 10, 2016. The preservation board considers this appeal under the demolition review criteria. The board denied the demolition permit as June 27, 2016, neither. Preservation board uses a set of demolition review criteria in ordinance 64689 and expanded ordinance 64832 that includes subsequent new construction. These criteria are reviewed by staff at the board meeting and form the basis of draft and final timing of fact and board decisions. The criteria are presented in order of importance to the ordinance, another factor to keep in mind. So, what I'm going to do now is go through those criteria as presented to the board and that the board evaluates them. The first criteria I want to talk about is architectural quality. Both structures were defined by the staff presentation and the board's decision as qualifying buildings. The architecture, and what that means is the architectural quality of a building and the ordinance is considered for demolition is the most important criteria, assuming there is no redevelopment plan on the site passed by the board of Alderman. And this site had no redevelopment, these sites had no redevelopment plan passed by the board of Alderman. Qualifying, which these buildings were judged to be, is defined by the ordinance as, quote, "qualifying listing on the national register over federal, state, and local or private incentive programs for rehabilitation and adaptive reuse." At the hearing, the staff analysis stated that although these buildings have been altered, they still maintain elements of their original historic form and massing and their street presence. And that was the important basis for the decision to call them qualifying. The ordinance also states that the demolition of merit or qualifying buildings, which buildings were judged to be, should not be approved except in unusual circumstances, which shall be expressly noted. The next criterion after, after equality is condition. The buildings were being, were found to be sound under the definition of the ordinance. And the ordinance states that the office shall make exterior inspections to determine whether a structure is sound, meaning that, quote, "visible portions of exterior walls and roofs appear capable of continuing to support their current load for six months or more." So, the staff made that, those visual inspections, that was their determination, and that was supported by the preservation board. The ordinance also includes consideration that the impact on attached structures should demolition occur. Both preservation board staff and the testimony of Alderman Scott will be noted. The demolition of the commercial building at 6303 Clayton Avenue, you can see, that's the second building from the right here, the small building with the red awning. Let me review that. Preservation board staff and Alderman Scott will be noted. The demolition of the commercial storefront building could have a negative impact on the two-story corner of commercial structure, which abuts the building, being proposed for demolition. The next criteria in the ordinance is neighborhood effect and reuse potential. Based upon the staff analysis and testimony of staff and Alderman Ogleby, the board found the buildings are being rehabilit, that boards are, that buildings are being rehabilitated in the neighborhood. Specifically regarding use potential, the board heard testimony that, quote, "5303 Clayton is gutted and framed and could be combined with a vacant lot to the left of it in a redevelopment effort." Also, because 6317 to 19 Clayton has original residential buildings attached with commercial storefronts, there's flexibility and potential redevelopment of the building. And that last quote was from the staff analysis for the project. The only proposed reuse of the site mentioned by the owners of the property, owners' representatives, rather, was for parking. It was pointed out by Alderman Ogleby in his testimony and by neighborhood residents and theirs that the grade change on Clayton Avenue would make it difficult to use the lots for parking. In addition, the preservation board received testimony, the owner has a large lot on Clayton Avenue that has not been used for parking. And so, that is the lot that they are referring to, that is not currently being used for parking, that is owned by the current owner, who proposes the demolition. And this is a picture, you can see the top west facade picture of the grade change at the 6317 to 19 building. And then, this picture shows the grade change of the 6303 building. Let me see if I can. So, this is the street level up here, and you can see the significance of grade change as it goes down here. And that was felt to be deterrent to the ability to reuse the parking. Under the criteria, criterion of urban design, which is the next criteria, the staff testified that the building proposed for demolition contributes to the streetscape on the north side of Clayton Avenue, which already contains a couple of vacant lots. Any loss of buildings would further compromise the block's design integrity. The owner proposed no subsequent construction. It was claimed that when more parcels are purchased, then new development could take place. However, the owner does not have site control over all parcels between 6303 and 6317 to 19 Clayton Avenue. In conclusion, the preservation board voted to uphold the director's denial of the demolition application, with no board members voting against the motion based upon the upholding of the staff denial. And to finalize remarks, I'd like to restate, I don't know if folks were able to read the transcript, but in the final deliberations, Commissioner David Richardson, I felt, gave an excellent synopsis of the board's view of the project, when he said the following things. There is no plan, no plan was presented for new construction of parcels proposed for demolition. Buildings were defined as qualifying, and demolition is based upon qualifying must be based upon unusual circumstances for demolition, which were not identified by the owner. The building condition is sound, as defined by the ordinance. The demolition of the building, of the 6303 Clayton Avenue building, that's the small one-story commercial building, could negatively impact the adjacent structure. Regarding reuse potential, that there are active rehabilitation efforts in the neighborhood. The owner presented no evidence of economic hardship in their events, and that the loss of the buildings without new construction will adversely affect the impact on the street state and the design of the street. So, that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions at this point?
Dan, although I've been here several months, I feel I'm still relatively new. So, in light of what you just mentioned, our David Richardson's last remarks, I also looked at his last remarks. And I'm curious as to, what he was saying is, I think also, we have the same issue with BJ CYU, and that the first time they came for demolition, they did not have any proposal of special construction or specific plan at that point in time when we denied it. So, they had denied, I guess, YU for demolition plan, for demolition plan. So, there are times when, I guess, something meets the definition of not qualifying, but if you come with redevelopment plan, it can meet qualifying? Is that what I'm reading into that?
Well, the ordinance has, you can define a structure in four ways by the ordinance. High merit, merit, qualifying, or not contributing. And as you go from high merit down the list, the buildings become, are valued as less historically significant with each run you go down. So, in this case, the buildings are qualified, which means that if you created a national register of district in this area, the staff's judgment and the board, preservation board's judgment was that these buildings could qualify as match, as contributing buildings to the district. However, they're not high merit, and they're not merit buildings. So, clearly, they're not sort of the best, or even, the best of the best, or even the best, so to speak, example of the historic structures we've got. And I think when you get down to that end of the spectrum, the section of the ordinance that talks about the reuse, the subsequent development plan comes into play. And if the board hears, I think they're reading up redevelopment that they think will be equal or better in quality today than what is proposed, that they probably would then feel comfortable supporting a demolition ordinance. That's how I read what David was saying. And I think, in this case, there was no redevelopment proposal on the table, and because of that, the decision was to not support the demolitions.
So, basically, what we're hearing right now is the contractor and or the developer wants to... to just demolish the building with no proposed future use. Is that what we're hearing?
Well, the developer, I should be careful about the new evidence piece here. But my recollection from the, from the transcript is that there was evidence presented that the developer owns some additional parcels around these buildings that does not have full site control. So there's evidence that the developer may be making an effort to create a redevelopment, I don't say redevelopment, to create a new proposal for, for new structures here eventually. But absent that full site control and a, and a real significant proposal for redevelopment, the Preservation Board did not feel that they met the criteria for subsequent redevelopment that would justify the demolition.
Okay. So as it stands today, you know, this being sustained, basically, let's say a year from now, they acquire whatever they're out there doing, all this new stuff that we can't talk about, they could come back and reapply, or it's totally dead?
No, I think under those circumstances, they could come back and reapply. That would be a different condition and basis for a new application.
Okay.
I'll make a technical point. Yes, you can reapply after one year.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I just make a, I'll make a comment, that I've seen the Board on occasions approve the demolition contingent upon a building permit being applied for a redevelopment proposal. So there are cases where, and I, where the Board has said, we approve it, but we're not going to, but only after certain, certain steps have been taken and imposing permits. So I've seen that the Board say that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
From here, it doesn't matter.
You can come up here.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening, and thank you for hearing this. As I understand it, these are rare instances where these are heard. My client does appreciate this opportunity. You're welcome to sit. Oh, nothing. Sorry. And Alderman slash Commissioner Boyd picked up on a very good point that I didn't plan on starting with, but I think I will analyze it. It was undisputed at the hearing, even with the opposition from the Aldermen and from the Neighborhood Association, and ultimately from the, from Resources, I'm sorry, the Preservation Board. My sense is that everyone agreed that these buildings should be demolished, and that the only impediment to it was the, listed in order of importance as the last one is to propose subsequent construction. My client, I produced Don Bellin, who is the demolition contractor. As you can see from the record, he did testify that this building, these buildings have no economic feasibility short of demolition. The, the properties as vacant land are worth far more than the properties with these dilapidated buildings on them. These buildings have become a haven for nuisance and illegal behavior in the Dogtown neighborhood. Every time my client seeks to secure the buildings with plywood and things like that, within, A, sometimes within hours, the plywood is removed. There was recently a meth lab found in one of the properties. There is significant-
You just said recently. So is that something that's occurred since the time you came to the Preservation Board?
This was mentioned in the record. There, in fact, within, within a few weeks leading up to the hearing, I think it might have been Alderman Ogleby that actually had called me, or somebody had called me in the neighborhood, trying to get in touch with my client, to press charges against some locally known druggie in the neighborhood who had been essentially squatting in the place. And that, I believe my client did press charges. And again, it's, it's a never-ending cycle. He can't demolish it, so every time he tries to board it up, the building gets breached again. Illegal, illegal activity, nuisance activity happens, and he simply goes through the process over and over. With not presenting proposed future construction, one, this is part of what could be a larger parcel, and also for criteria reasons, my client didn't feel inclined to share that vision he has publicly. And recent history dictates that the zoo was able to tear down the former Deaconess Hospital and leave it as a vacant lot. There, I understand the zoo does have, you know, a larger plan in place, but there was nothing submitted. So it seems a bit disingenuous to hold that against my client when less than a mile away, the zoo was allowed to do the exact same thing. And again, when we appeared at the June twenty-seventh hearing, the denial at the staff level lacked any specificity, short of directing my client and me to the two ordinances at play here. That left open a very, very wide spectrum of issues that we did our best to address at that hearing. My reading of the ordinances was that there was, in fact, a second administrative opportunity, which is here tonight. I understand that this is more of a review, and if a closed review, so to speak. However, the next step here would be to the Circuit Court, and we are making our record here. As such, and I know these won't be considered, but if nothing else, I kind of primed the pump with, with your attorney, Mr. Meyer, about this. I do have a structural assessment from a professional engineer.
I don't think that should be up with the issue.
And, and that's fair enough. But I understand, I'm also having an audience for the Circuit Court. And whether these are considered or not, I'll be-
It, it should not be brought up at this meeting, because this Board is considering only the evidence presented and reviewing the actions of the Preservation Board. And so it should not be part of the record on this, a separate issue.
And, and fair enough, but for the record, should a court review this?
Well, for, it should not be part of this record for you, because this Board is not reviewing that information.
And, and Commissioner, I, I understand that, and I appreciate that. However, I need to make a record for the Circuit Court. And I would like a very brief opportunity to at least-
Not at this location. You, you do not have the ability to do that here.
I believe that is a procedural irregularity, if not an impropriety. And at this point, I would ask, as part of our release, and I should, should the Board not reverse, I would ask that it be remanded to the Preservation Board, or modified, or however that is, so that we can reopen the evidence at that level, at which time I would be introducing evidence from a structural engineer.
Well, that should, should, at that time, you could-
And, and again, that's fair enough. This whole, as I've been practicing administrative law for twelve years, this is the most unusual set of review that I've encountered. I understand it is what it is. And fair enough, I suppose I've made my record to the best of my ability. Getting back to what transpired at the June twenty-seventh hearing, again, there was, I think the record shows that, in fact, as Alderman Boyd pointed out, all the Board was asking for was a proposed future construction, which they didn't get. So instead of saying, well, we all agree these buildings should be knocked down, they said, no, you can't have it. And you can't have it because you're not telling us what you're doing next. I think the record clearly states, the, the picture evidence shows that these buildings are not structurally sound, in my opinion, under the ordinance. I think the ordinance is very vague in that the criteria is only that it has to stand for six months. So if something could stand for six months in a day, it's not demolished. But if it stands for five months, thirty days, then it, then it would be a candidate for being demolished. Going back to the record that was created on June twenty-seventh, when the police are called to respond to calls for service at these properties, the condition of the buildings, as was set forth in the record, is not safe. There are missing floorboards, there is significant water and structural damage, there are missing portions of the roof, and should there be an exigent situation in which law enforcement or other first responders would have to go in, they would be putting themselves in possibly grave danger going into these sites. Again, I thought there was enough evidence presented at the June twenty-seventh hearing through Don Bellin's testimony, that contrary to what the staff decided, this is not a qualifying, neither one of these buildings are a qualifying structure. And with the, at the time, limited evidence that was allowed to be presented at the June twenty-seventh hearing, I believe there was significant evidence, both testimonial and through pictures, that show that these are not sound structures. These structures have no potential for reuse or resale. There was evidence put on the record, these, these two properties have been vacant for over ten years, they've been on the market for over five years. My client can't even get, anytime somebody-
All that was on the record?
That was all on the record.
Is Don Bellin a architectural historian or anything?
Part of, not to be rude, but is he, is he finished with his testimony?
No, I don't think so.
Can we?
Yeah, we can hold them.
I'm just curious, I mean, you mentioned the name, so I'm just curious who Don Bellin is.
Right. I agree with you. But I was just wondering if we could definitely-
Can we hold that until you call me in?
Don Bellin is the owner of Ellen Wrecking. He's a demolition contractor. I believe his, his background was probably briefly stated on the record. I apologize. I didn't really have the opportunity to not go through that. But certainly, Mr. Bellin would be qualified to speak on matters of demolition, that is his trade. Mr. Bellin qualified his testimony with, kind of ironically, he is of the belief that buildings should not be demolished. And he even stated that in his own real estate portfolio, he's only had to demolish one of his. If a building can be rehabbed or put to some sort of reuse short of demolition, that is always Don Bellin's first option. Don Bellin, heavy touch fight on the record, was familiar with the structures, with the condition of them. And it was Don's opinion that both of them, the only potential for reuse is to demolish them and have vacant lots. It was also put on the record that even without a, a subsequent, a proposed subsequent construction on file with the city, it would be to the public benefit to have these as vacant lots, as opposed to vacant buildings, where again, they are havens for illegal and nuisance activity, and a ticking time bomb for a bigger disaster as the environmental conditions continue to beat these buildings up. Efforts, as was put on the record in June, all efforts to secure the buildings get thwarted by the criminals or the people that want to get in. Again, plywood gets put up, plywood I believe Don Bellin testified that anything short of demolition would be cost prohibitive. So to get in, it's just not practical for someone to come in and spend three or four hundred thousand dollars on a building that's going to have a market value of maybe a hundred and fifty, when all is said and done.
Were those two numbers presented?
I don't know if numbers were presented. I know that cost prohibitive was presented, and that anyone who was asked on that topic had the same belief that the, the best, frankly, the only use for, for these parcels is to demolish the existing building. My client did offer to grade them as need be, to provide in the interim for additional parking. The, what is that, that large lot, which is known in Dogtown as the lumberyard, was somewhat used against my client for the not being developed. My understanding is there is a development in place there. I'm not sure what has been filed with the city yet, but that project will be moving. My client-
Does that not present any evidence?
Well, the-
A redevelopment statement with the lumberyard.
Well, fair enough. That, that was used against him. But evidence was put into the record, and my client is a developer, he's got a track record. Don Bellin spoke the same way that Mr. Krasnoff did, that my client has developed the, are those apartment buildings or whatever that, that larger structure was in the, in the back of the picture that shows the lumberyard in the foreground. I believe my client was also the developer that turned, converted the old Fox Two by Emo's into the Mercedes dealership.
That's on the record, is in the transcript.
Fair enough. My, my client has a track record as a developer. These properties, while they, he has not divulged his use yet, there was evidence put on the record on June twenty-seventh that they would be used as vacant lots for parking. There were some issues about degrading. I believe Don Bellin got up and stated that that wouldn't be an issue. You can grade a lot relatively easy. There's alley access to the one, I think, that has the most slope to it anyway. And what it boils down to is that it just, it's patently unfair to my client for, for the Board to somewhat unanimously agree that these buildings should be torn down, but in the next breath, they, but you can't. So he is simply asking to exercise his right as a property owner, and to have the demolitions take place so that they can be put, those lots can be put to better use. Take any questions, Doc, if anyone has any?
Okay. So I'll do a question. I have a letter here from Peter Casten, saying that the building is not structurally sound. Is Peter a registered professional engineer or architect in particular?
Peter's my client. I don't know what his background is, aside from being a developer.
Okay. If he's not, and he didn't find it that way, then he probably doesn't have the expertise to make that kind of commentary. Also, if Don Bellin is not a registered professional engineer, and his expertise is limited to strictly building demolition. So as far as the commentary about renovating buildings, that's personal things of Don, that's not his, he cares about the sound.
And I, I recognize that. I thought it was ironic to hear that, you know, it's like a-
The comment that I have is, I'm sorry, I have a couple of, I'm sorry. You talk about the building being occupied by people from the outside, people getting in there, becoming nuisance and so forth. If you look at the picture, you'll notice a couple things. There are windows that are open, that are way beyond the height of anybody to reach. So it appears to me like simply closing windows would probably protect those buildings against the weather, protect them against people getting in there, damage to the interior of the building. If you also notice one of the pictures that shows, there's not a rust cleaner on the building. And it seems to me if there was a electric to the building, and maybe there was a light on, maybe there wouldn't be people living inside the building. So, you know, city will maintain hundreds of buildings come vacant from there. And we do a pretty good job of keeping people out. There are ways to do that if you really want to do it. And it doesn't appear to me that the individual who owns the building has made any strides to do that.
I don't know if it's part of the record. How long has he owned these buildings?
That's a good question. I, I know they've been vacant at least ten years. I presume he's owned them that long, but I, I apologize. I don't know that-
One of them was purchased in two thousand, that's probably on the two thousand, but we can't add that because it's not on the record.
Well, it's difficult to hear the concerns about the condition of the building, the green factor and the continued deterioration. If he's a property owner, he's been not maintaining. So to then come to us with a request to demolish a building because he hasn't maintained them adequately, it's difficult for us to support his position.
Mr. Chairman, your procedure is to allow Mr. Krasnoff to come back for five minutes at some type of rebuttal.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I mean, my reading of the transcript and hearing and testimony is that there was feedback from the Board, and it was their criteria that one must meet in order to demolish certain buildings. If you buy certain buildings, it's important to know where you bought them and what status they are as it relates to historic or not. So that, I think there should be a little onus on the building owner for understanding where you purchase buildings, and that they're not the standard building that you may be able to knock down just because you, it was economically feasible for you to do so. So that said, given that this is a contributing structure, the feedback that I heard was that if you had a viable redevelopment plan, then we would have a different conversation. But as you mentioned, your client was not inclined to share. And I think the feedback was that your client perhaps should be inclined to share whatever that subsequent or future-looking development might be, in order to secure a different result.
that subsequent or future-looking development might be in order to secure a different result. But prior to that point, he doesn't reach, meet the appropriate standard to get approval for demolition. And that makes sense to me, but that's just my reading of the transcript and again of Dan's testimony.
It sounds like it was deliberations versus a conversation as opposed to applicant here.
Hopefully, this question is appropriate. Is it your client's understanding that this building is in the historic, is part of National Historic Register?
He understands it's in Dogtown, and that's part of a historic preservation district. These buildings aren't on the registry.
They're not on the registry?
No, they're part of the district.
Okay.
I don't think anyone's going to like chain themselves to these buildings just out the bulldozers if it ever happened.
Okay.
Historically significant.
Okay, now, I want to ask Don Roy a question. So if this is part of historic district, will it qualify to be placed on the National Historic Register because it's within a district?
So I'm going to answer it this way, because I train folks to think in this manner, is what is it that gives us the authority to review this? So this particular authority is that it's in a preservation review area. And so, city ordinances give us this authority. It's not in the designated historic district.
Okay.
So when we, you see in the record, the ordinance and the criteria that was being evaluated, those are local criteria and local ordinances pertaining to a preservation review district.
Okay.
And in the fact that it therefore goes to the preservation or cultural resources staff, they look at the buildings individually and then make a determination on that three-level criteria that you testified to.
Thank you.
I'm not wrong in that not being, this was under a preservation review district.
Not in any kind of historically designated area.
But what we know as we're here is it's that one item under city law where the geography is said that it's a preservation review for demolition is what we're operating.
Got you. Okay, Mr. Emerson, I'm looking through the transcripts and, as you mentioned earlier, Don Bellin, whom I think Commissioner Bradley has suggested that he's not a registered engineer, but he, from the transcript, he admits that he's been 23 years in the demolition business. And he also suggests that he's in the business of saving buildings. And I appreciate his honesty. And because what he also goes on to say is, the owner basically is a friend of his. Right? And so, kind of looking at this and, well, he kind of helps somebody doesn't help him because he's in the business of saving, that's what he says. He likes to save buildings, but he's a demolition contractor. And, you know, I've been in the rehabilitation business for about 23 years, so I know you can go from $100,000 to $300,000 to redeveloping a building, depends on the many reasons what you want to really do with them. So it kind of just looks like it suggests to me that Mr. Bellin would probably err on the side that he could probably do something with this building had it not been for the fact that it's his friend and he liked it, gives some support to his friend. I mean, it almost kind of reads that way in here. I'm just making editorial comments. I don't say that to be fact, but that's the way I kind of read that. And which was just kind of interesting. I actually, last week, because I was visiting a friend of mine, project that he's doing over there, rode past those buildings. And I look at buildings that, or in the ward that I represent, that are seriously crumbling. I'm not an architect either. I'm like Mr. Bellin, I can look at a building, tell you, hm, that building looks like it probably stand for two or three years, based on my experience of how I've seen buildings crumbling in my neighborhood. And so, I'm just, I just, it puzzles me how these buildings could actually be in that implorable condition that they have to be in, and that you can't somehow save the building in the most practical way. I mean, certainly, I know today, and I argue with my constituents about this, about modern buildings turn this down, we want something really nice and sexy, you know, that fits today's standards. But maintaining the architectural landscape of a community is also important, would you agree?
Sure.
And it seems like the residents of Dogtown are very interested in, and I kind of call the Dogtown neighborhood like a bedroom community, you look, it's got these little small bunkers and everybody kind of know each other. And it's kind of this, you know, Clayton is almost like a main street in a way. And so, I can see why they would want to maintain that landscape.
And I would agree with you, except for the fact that everyone, the buildings can come down if you tell us what's coming up. So this isn't, I think that's a red herring to say, "We need to preserve the facade of the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood," I forget what the term used in the ordinance is, when, in the next breath it says, "Oh no, if they can come down, you have to give us more," when they've basically turned the criteria of the ordinance on its head and put the least important factor to the top.
So it is your understanding that in the absence of a redevelopment plan, that it's practical based on the ordinance, the way it stands today, that a denial would be appropriate?
No, we disagree with the denial. We think that everyone's hanging their head on the denial of there's no proposed new construction. If you had that, we'll overlook everything that we're using against you. So again, I think they've turned the criteria on its head, and they are now putting by ordinance, the least important factor being proposed subsequent construction ahead of everything else because the staff has made these summary determinations that it is a qualifying structure and that somehow, some way from an, again, from an external review, they can say, "It'll stand for..."
But you think it meets the merits of the ordinance though? The intent of the ordinance? Would you agree?
I think these buildings should be demolished. They're not structurally sound. It would be cost prohibitive to do any other type of reuse.
Go ahead, Don.
Let's not be asking this to draw conclusions, other than being able to say things that are on the record that might be in hand for your concern.
I got you. Okay, I don't have any more questions.
There are no more specific questions, and I'd like to just, if any kind of rebuttal comment, and then we do a general discussion among ourselves.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Can you come up here? I'm going to cut you to four minutes because you spoke twice or more.
I will need you in four minutes. I have just a couple of rebuttal comments. The preservation board didn't turn the ordinance on its head and use the least important criteria. The most important criteria is that it's a qualifying structure. There are other factors that the boards can consider down the line in these criteria, one of which is the reuse of the site. And in the board's opinion, the, what they heard, the evidence they were given, the reuse was not a strong enough factor to outweigh the number one factor on the list, assuming there's no redevelopment plan. The only other thing I'd say, there really wasn't, there were some people brought forth who own businesses in the neighborhood who said, "I don't think these buildings are economically viable for redevelopment." But there was no financial analysis presented, there was no cash flow, no pro forma, no real physical evidence that showed someone had really taken a pen to paper and talked to a contractor, and determined how much it costs to reuse buildings and what you might do with them. And that's the kind of evidence that at other preservation board hearings has helped sway in terms of trying to evaluate the economic value of the reuse of the building. Those are the only two rebuttal comments I have.
Thank you.
As a courtesy, you can invite Anderson up.
I've got nothing else to add, but I'm happy to field any remaining questions if there are any.
It's open for discussion among board members?
I have a question. And this is just out of, you know-
Nuisance.
Nuisance. So in the past, when you all have reviewed situations like this, and I don't know if this is a common reason why demolition is organized, because of a lack of, oh, future development, I guess just expressing exactly what the proposed development, maybe, you know, plans or anything like that. What scale of specificity do we look for? Because of that requirement of that wording. Do we look for something like the owner's plans to develop it in the future? Do we look for a set of stamp programs? Do we look for something like, you know, some site development? To what scale will we need to satisfy that ordinance, that factor? Could you state our rules?
So, one, you get to make those judgments. But you've heard a lot of talk that the ordinance itself talks about in detail, it's on page 30 of the staff report, that the ordinance comes out, the criteria that you look at. So the redevelopment plans, there's an architecture quality, condition, structurally attached, neighborhood effect, reuse, reuse potential, economic hardship, and proposed subsequent The fact that this is a body that is dealing with plans that are typically architectural, it tends to mean not just your wish as a plan, just of what you're going to do, but do you have something in the architecture to show you, show what their plans are for here? Why I say it that way is, it is an architectural review. One of the aspects that we're looking at is the effect of the demolition on the street state. And so, if you present plans that may say that you're doing something up at the streets or somewhere on the site, they, you get that to weigh in your deliberations. Absent those types of plans, you don't get to weigh those in your deliberation.
Another question?
There was one, everyone agreeing that this building should come down. There's a letter from the Clayton Town Community Association to the contrary to the same. Yeah, the flight is a pain in the butt, but the track record that was brought up before is that there's a vacant lot across the street that hasn't had any redevelopment. So problematic for us to have multiple vacant lots without it. So it seems like everything in twice has been given this notion of, if there's a plan that we fight into, that you even have provided to us, perhaps. So we should say, everyone agreed that this building should come down, that everyone agreed that this building could come down if there was a plan. That makes sense to me. I mean, as Dan says, this is not a high-mare building, it's not on a register. You know, they're in relatively rough shape, as always find out. So if there was a better or equal use that was of contributing nature to the neighborhood and communities, then people would consider it. But that hasn't been made, and that is part of the ordinance. That is what it is.
And the case is also that, you know, Commissioner Boyd has made a good point, neglecting the property does not make the case for demolition. You as a property owner have a responsibility to maintain that property in a usable fashion until it comes to time. And so, what I see from it is that there may be problems with it, although I'm not convinced it's structurally sound from what I think. I think that it has been neglected tremendously. And I think that it's creating a problem for the neighborhood because of neglect. And I think that, you know, the owner should have a little more consideration for the neighborhood and say, you know, "I should take better care of this building," and then play into the whole picture and follow all the procedure and rule. And then, maybe everyone would have a better indication of the understanding of what he wants to do. But I honestly believe these buildings have been neglected, and this is a knee-jerk reaction to say, "I don't want to put any more into them than where they are." The easiest thing is, is I just rip them down and move on. And I will tell you guys, looking at the way, the great setup, to use that as a parking lot, is ridiculous. It would not work. Would not meet any of the criteria that is required for public parking. The faults are wrong, the material is wrong, the lighting is wrong, ADA accessibility is wrong, actually, on and on and on and on and on. And the attorney made a great point of that within the description that he gave in the preservation hearing. So it could happen, if all, if everything came about, but I think in the interim, I think the owner should do diligence and do his share of the neighbor and take care of his building. Any other questions?
I'm looking to be uphold the preservation board's decision.
It's been moved in sections of the 40, denial by the preservation board, is there any question on motion?
Pre-let's roll.
Pre-let's roll, and we, uh, thank you.
Fair enough.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Harris?
Aye.
Sheriff of the Tainer?
Aye.
Motion passes with six ayes and one abstention.
Thank you, members of the commission. So just, that concludes your final act for this item. That means we'll notify the applicant of your decision. It gets to be in a context of, yes, they can apply again after one year. Two, they can go to, and there is, as we talked about in the first criteria of the Avenue Two, where we-
Thank you again for the opportunity. Happy night, everyone.
So, you know I talk fast, but I talk slowly there, to remind you that next month we'll be reviewing this again for another review of a preservation board activity. We expect that the property owner of demolition will be represented by an attorney. The attorney happens to be Dave Sweeney, who was present.
Oh, oh, hopefully you got the-
Hopefully you got the gist.
Yeah.
No new business tonight, no need for an executive session. One of Emily's new activities is helping Michelle do some things that have been on this place for quite a time. So we'll catch up on some of the things as we're closing on Delta. Next one, as we see the clock come to nine, 10 or seven, I think next one, the hand will be on the other side of the clock.
Did we already vote on hand this next one next month?
We did.
Okay. It's just that this one got before this month, and because of the time, it'll be next month before the next one.
So they both were at different preservation board meetings. We, you voted to take off both of them at the last, last commission meeting, and we just staggered them to the end.
Thank you for that, that was very interesting of you.
All right, I understand that.
The, Adana now has the first Wednesdays of the month off. Just Michelle now is here, but Adana's the one that has to reduce that record. And, you know, the scale of that is a pretty heavy-duty job to do, we just need two in one month.
Okay, so is there any further discussion, or is there any motion to adjourn?
Two more seconds.
All favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.